Okay, we'll come to order. Today is the Wednesday, November 19th. Regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Shits.
Here.
Commissioner Torgerson.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Berman.
Here.
And Chair Kane.
Here. Report regarding posting of agenda, please.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, November 12th, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Great, thank you. Would you join me in receding the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes. Any comments or corrections from the Commission? And these would be the minutes of October 15th. I have a comment to make wherever I find my copy of the minutes. It's actually relatively modest, but under number 11, Comments from Commissioners, it stated that I asked the planning staff to obtain information as why a public notice posted on our property did not indicate a certain date. That's a little jumbled. What it was is this is a property that we acted on, and we directed that certain things be made, but we didn't give them a performance date. And that's what I inquired staff to check into. Any other comments or corrections? If not, could I have a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
I move to accept.
I'll second.
I have a motion. Support call roll, please.
Commissioner Shits.
Aye.
Commissioner Torgerson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Berman.
Here.
Aye.
On a vote of five to zero, the minutes as amended of October 15th were passed. Oral communications, I have no cards. And I would also mention, I have no cards on anything. So if anyone is planning to speak during the evening to the Commission, you should fill in one of the cards that are on the desk off to the side. And if you're not, you don't have to. But at this point, no one's going to be speaking in front of us. But as it relates to oral communications, I have none. I'm going to move on, and with the Commission's permission, I think it would be appropriate that rather than going to the appeals and old business, I'm sorry, rather than going to the appeal, we drop down to items seven, A and B, old business, the Brown Act presentation, followed by the zoning appeals procedure presentation by Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the Commission, as part of our goal to periodically update the boards and commissions on relevant laws and procedures, we've wanted to provide you a refresher on the Brown Act, given the fact that we have also new, relatively new Commissioners, to also discuss the Brown Act as it relates to this Commission, as well as some of the procedures and procedural due process issues that impact the business of the Commission. What I will, so I'm basically giving one presentation on these two items, and I will try to get through this with some speed. But obviously, if you have questions during the presentation, feel free to interrupt, and I'll go through those. We'll be discussing first the Brown Act, the open meetings law that applies to this Commission, and then I'll touch on some of the procedural issues that impacts your business, especially with respect to hearing procedure on appeals and public hearings. So, on the Brown Act, the Brown Act was enacted in the 1950s, has governed the conduct of legislative bodies of cities and counties and other public agencies. It's been amended multiple times, and it really doesn't look like what it was adopted, as it was adopted in the 50s, except for this one sentence, which has remained intact. And basically, two basic requirements of the Brown Act. Excuse me, the first, that all meetings be open to the public, and also that members of the public have the opportunity to attend meetings and give their input, except as otherwise permitted in the chapter in the Brown Act. The Brown Act obviously applies to councils and boards and commissions that are established by formal action of the council. So obviously, that applies to this Planning Commission. There's an exception for ad hoc committees, which are specifically a subgroup of a commission or the council that has a very limited and defined purpose and scope. It wouldn't necessarily apply to standing committees of a commission of the city. The Act governs meetings, and it's governed when the majority of the members of a commission convene to discuss business that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of that particular body. It covers acts such as hearing and discussing or deliberating on an item, anything having to do with the subject matter jurisdiction of your particular body. So obviously, for this body related to land use and planning matters, that's just jurisdiction, so any time there's a majority of you that get together to talk about those items, that would be a meeting that's subject to the requirements of the Brown Act. Also, because after the Brown Act was first adopted, the legislature found that some city councils and county board supervisors were getting around the Brown Act by having serial meetings. In other words, not everybody getting into the room at the same time, but having meetings via telephone conversations and other communication where collective concurrence was achieved without actually getting together in the room at the same time. So this, whether it's by email or telephone call, serial meetings are prohibited under the Brown Act. Here's an example of what could be a serial meeting, where you have a Commissioner speaking to another Commissioner, Commissioner A speaking to B, and then B talking to Commissioner C and telling C what he or she learned in conversing with Commissioner A. That's where you have a potential for a Brown Act violation or a potential Brown Act problem. And so those types of activities are prohibited under the Brown Act, unless it's part of a noticed public meeting. Another example is similar, but where one member's speaking to more than one other member of the particular body, or I should say, speaking to a majority of the body outside of the public meeting context. A Brown Act, a meeting under the Brown Act could also occur where maybe not a member is acting as sort of this hub, but maybe a staff or third party is communicating to a majority of the members of the Commission and conveying to the other Commissioners what views on a particular matter those Commissioners hold. For example, if somebody, if an applicant or developer were to have conversations with each of the individual Commission members or each of the other council members, and say, "I've got the other Commissioners, I've got their votes already. How do you feel you're going to vote?" That obviously would be a Brown Act violation, because it's a meeting occurring, but perhaps a third party is acting as the intermediary.
And that would be specific to that type of conversation. An individual could still meet with, for example, all five council members individually, but not in terms of the specific content that you talked about?
Correct. Individual contacts, and I'll get into that a little bit. There were some cases that have come down recently in some legislation, but individual contacts are permissible as long as there's no sharing of the views that other Commissioners or other board members may have. And again, basically, the intent of the Brown Act is to ensure that action is not taken outside the public meeting context. And action can be a collective decision or a commitment to take some action or an actual vote of the body. Any sort of conversations that occur that clarify members' understanding of an issue or help facilitate a dialogue on a particular issue, where those types of dialogues are taking place outside of a noticed and open public meeting has the potential to violate the Brown Act. Again, this is sort of the example I used, where perhaps a Commissioner talks to another Commissioner and says, "I think I'm going for this ordinance. What do you think?" That in itself wouldn't be a Brown Act issue, because you'd have less than a majority of the quorum acting on a particular issue. But if the Commissioner also says, "By the way, I have two other Commissioners that are leading my way," that again, that is potential Brown, that would be a Brown Act violation if it did not occur in our open and public meeting. Again, as I mentioned in response to Chairman Kane's inquiry, individual briefings by staff of Commissioners or council members is permitted under the Brown Act as long as there is, in those individual briefings, staff is not communicating the views of any other members to the particular Commissioner who's getting that briefing. Again, the whole point here is to avoid achieving a collective concurrence, and for the staff to ensure that they're not disclosing the views and positions of the Commissioners when they're having individual briefings. One warning we always give out is that we do use email in the city office sometimes to communicate information. We may send out an email to the entire Commission, just providing an update. We want to urge caution to make sure that we don't hit the reply all button and start having a conversation on that email, because that would pose a problem. There are some exceptions to the Brown Act where a majority may convene for a particular purpose, but wouldn't necessarily constitute a meeting. Such things as conferences, community organized meetings, not organized by the city, but where maybe an outside organization is having an event or a meeting on a particular project or community event in the city, that would not constitute a meeting under the Brown Act. You wouldn't need to notice it as a meeting, so long as there's not internal discussion at the meeting amongst a majority of the body outside the scheduled program of that conference or community meeting. Individual contacts, again, are not Brown Act meetings. And also, attendance at an open and noticed meeting of another local agency or another commission. So if the council had a meeting and invited the Planning Commission to attend, that obviously would not constitute a meeting of the Planning Commission. Social ceremonial occasions, ground breakings, opening ceremonies, those sorts of things, obviously not a meeting under the Brown Act. And again, less than a quorum of a commission or body can also, can always have a discussion, two of this five-member body can always have a discussion, as long as there's no future discussion amongst, with other board members. Obviously, the Brown Act, and I'll kind of go through this a little quicker, has specific notice requirements, regular meetings, 72-hour posted agendas for special meetings. That's a 24-hour notice. There are some exceptions for an emergency meeting. An emergency is defined in the statute, but it's a true emergency that usually applies to, for example, your city council that may need to respond to an emergency in an immediate fashion. Within the public notice realm of the Brown Act, there's obviously a requirement that the city mail agenda and packets to anyone who's requested in writing, and those written requests are good for a year. For any meetings that are noticed and posted, there are some requirements for the agendas that there be a brief enough description of a particular item so that the public has an opportunity to understand what it is that the Commission is going to be discussing at that particular meeting. And the agendas must be posted in a place accessible to the public. That's why all of our city council, the Commission and boards, all the agendas are posted outside the 613 building, so that anybody who wants the opportunity to look at that can do so. And we obviously, we post it on the web as well. Another important thing for this Commission to have a certain sense of is discussing matters that are not on your agenda. You might have people come to your oral communications part of your agenda and want to discuss something, or you might have a hearing where you want to discuss an issue of whether the zoning code should be changed. Those types of things, those discussion or action on those types of matters is prohibited. There is an exception, obviously, to briefly respond to comments made be either by other Commissioners or members of the public. The Brown Act uses the word "brief" three times in that one section, so it's very clear that it has to be a very brief response. Can't be a full discussion on something that's not before you. And then there is an exception. In my experience, we've usually seen this apply for the city council, when there's something that's arisen after the posting agenda, and you need to take action on it at that particular meeting. There are certain, as I mentioned at the outset, the second sort of big part of the Brown Act is the public access portion. We cannot require someone to sign in or to register their name or address in order to attend a meeting or in order to participate in the meeting. And then obviously, the public must have the opportunity to address this Commission, both on agenda items and on non-agenda items. That's why we have the oral communications portion of the agenda, where anybody can discuss anything not on the agenda, as long as it's within your subject matter jurisdiction. And then, when we do have, like for example, hearings, where we might have a lot of speakers, there is discretion of the Commission usually acting through the Chair to limit debate or limit discussion, I should say. My general, our general rule is that anything, if you have a significant number of speakers, where it's going to take all night to get through them, it's probably okay to limit it to less than three minutes, like two minutes. But there's actually one case which says one minute might be not enough. We do have in our procedure rules, if you have a lot of speakers on a particular item, the Chair has the discretion to ask if one person may represent the entire side of an issue that is written into our rules, so that the Chair has the authority to sort of ask that question of the proponents or opponents of a particular item, just for the ease of getting through your meeting without having to be here all night. Obviously, within the right to speak at the meetings is the right to criticize the policies and programs and procedures of the Committee, the Commission. We call this the thick-skinned rule. If you've taken on the role of either being elected or appointed to this position, then you have to take on responsibility that you are going to be criticized. And the members of the public have the right to tape or broadcast the meetings, as long as they're not a disturbance to the proceedings. Generally, as a general rule, any materials that are submitted to this body also have to be submitted, made available to the public upon request. And any materials that are made available must be made available in alternative formats for ADA purposes upon request. I'll just kind of skip through this. Obviously, these are some of the rules regarding teleconferencing and that our meetings must meet the requirements of the ADA. One thing to point out is obviously, secret ballots are prohibited. It's not been an issue here, but sometimes it may come up. Can we vote on this secret ballot? No, the Brown Act does prohibit that. Yes?
The sentence, teleconferencing including voting, what does that mean?
Oh.
Is it good or is it bad?
Well, it's not.
Prohibited or is it encouraged?
Well, it's not encouraged and it's not prohibited. It is permitted, meaning that if, for example, if one of the Commissioners were offsite but wanted to participate in the meeting, he could. The notice would have to be, wherever you're teleconferencing from, that location would also have to be noticed and open. So if you're vacationing in Hawaii, and you want to teleconference from your hotel room, you'd have to post that, and you'd have to make it available for anybody who happens to be in Hawaii and wants to come watch you.
Would you notice that prior enough in advance?
And surprisingly, occasionally, that method is used sometimes if members of legislative bodies do really want, it's a particular item that's important, and they want to participate, they will do it. And it is permitted. I wouldn't say it's encouraged, though.
Do you have the equipment here for teleconferencing?
Oh, we don't. Well, we don't here, but I'm sure we probably could make it if it was absolutely critical.
If you don't have any.
Something planned?
No. There are, the Brown Act does have specific exceptions for closed sessions. I'm not really going to get into them. They have to do litigation, or real estate, or labor negotiations.
It'll never happen.
Planning Commission doesn't really mean closed session, so I'll go through that. There are penalties for violations. I will tell you, the intent of the Brown Act is not to punish people, but is to have meetings open in public. So if there is ever a violation, in my experience, if there has been a violation, it's usually inadvertent and a technical violation. So what the Brown Act allows is for that violation to be cured. In other words, for the board to meet again and basically correct it in a subsequent meeting. So that's just something to keep in mind. You won't go to jail if there's inadvertent. Like I've seen, we've seen occasionally, there may be an inadvertent technical violation, but it's not a punitive statute in that sense. If there are any questions on the Brown Act, I just want to briefly touch on procedure and as our proceedings that we deal with here, both in the appellate context and also in dealing with approval of tentative maps. We have hearings, obviously, before the Planning Commission, both for legislative proceedings, where the Planning Commission has recommended to the council that they adopt some legislation or not adopt some legislation, including amendments to our zoning code and subdivision code. We do have procedural requirements there. They're in the code, notice and hearing, an opportunity to be heard. With respect, we also have obviously hearings with respect to what are called quasi-judicial proceedings. Anything, a conditional use permit, hearing, appeal hearing, variances, anything where the Planning Commission is acting as, in essence, a judge, judging the facts and making a determination based on those facts. Those hearings, both the applicants and the appellants and the neighbors are entitled to a certain amount of what we call procedural due process, a process that is due based on the Constitution. I will tell you that the hearings that come before you, when you're acting as the appellate body, where the zoning, I think, yeah, where the zoning administrator is acting as the initial hearing officer, and then those come to you, those hearings are de novo, meaning they're a new hearing, meaning you have the right to hear all evidence new again. You don't have to obviously go and watch what the ZA did. Typically, our packets that come before you include the ZA's determination and the application that was before the ZA, but it's a new hearing that you listen to. It doesn't mean that whatever was discussed at that hearing is irrelevant, but just means that you're having a new hearing. With the right to a hearing comes the opportunity to be heard. Applicants have the, and appellants, and anybody who's interested in a particular action has the opportunity to give testimony and submit documentary evidence to make their case. Oftentimes, you may get somebody who submits a letter or even a lengthy letter right at the time of the hearing. That is still part of your record. You're still required to consider it. But I do acknowledge that if you get a lengthy letter right at the time of the hearing, it is, just as a matter of fact, it's going to get less consideration. I understand that, but it's part of your record. You're not to dismiss it, but it is something that obviously is not entitled to the same level of review that you might get something with your packet. Obviously, if you do get something that's submitted right at the time of the hearing, the Commission does have the discretion to consider whether to continue an item to take more time to review something, if they feel it's something worthy of looking at additionally. The burden of proving a particular matter is on the appellant, anything that the ZA has approved, if someone's appealed that, that burden is on the appellant to make the case that the findings can or cannot be made, depending on which position they're arguing. And then, the decision is that you're to make is based on the evidence that's in the record before you. And that evidence is, has to be based on all the evidence that's submitted in the public hearing. There are a couple of, I want to call, they're not exceptions, but they're something that comes with that. And one is obviously site visits. You may be invited to visit the site, or you may on your own want to visit the site to get a better sense of a particular application. And that's permissible, as long as you disclose on the record that you did visit the site and how, what impressions that it left you with. The second issue is ex-party contacts. Those are basically contacts you may have with an applicant or an appellant or a neighbor on a particular project. As a matter of due process, ex-party contacts are somewhat discouraged, because the point of the hearing is to have all the evidence laid out at the hearing. However, if you do, if you do meet with someone outside the hearing, again, it's incumbent that you disclose that on the record before the hearing even commences, and what the general nature of a particular meeting was about. Again, we don't encourage them for that reason. The materials that are handed out to you do have sort of the, there's a flow chart that was handed out, as well as a sort of the script for how the matters go. Generally speaking, since the appellant has the burden of proof, he or she would go first, and then would have a right under the Planning Commission's procedures to have rebuttal time at the end of all the testimony. And again, it's critical that in these hearings that you make no decision about a project until all the evidence has been heard and the hearing has been closed. Obviously, we have strong opinions, and we get the packet, and we review it, and you may have, you may have some thoughts about which side of the project will go on, but it's critical that you keep an open mind and that you make your decision after hearing all the evidence that's before you. So that's the basic, that's the basic presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions? Any scenarios, anyone wants to play forward? I just have two comments. One is, I consider, especially, well, on just about any of our business, but especially on appeals, I've always considered a site visit to be kind of an expectation, almost a mandatory part of our performance. And in the past, we generally haven't made it a big point to say, "Oh, I went to the site." But it sounds like you want us to be more proactive in noting that.
Yeah.
Okay. So we will, I think, as a matter of course, make that when we're doing especially appeals or anything in front of us. Make it known that you sat by the site. The other thing I'll note is that the chairperson remarks, as prepared, and the flow chart is repaired, are not in, they don't mesh perfectly.
Okay.
And in fact, my understanding of the way I've done it historically has been in regards to the nine items on the chairman remarks as opposed to the flow chart. It kind of breaks down in terms of appellant and applicant and time period, and who speaks in what order.
Okay. And I, like, since I've been here, since we've been doing the chair for the last couple of years with you, obviously, then we should go, we should continue with the script, and we'll go through the flow chart and the.
Just pointing out, we have a little discrepancy there. And if it later turns out the flow chart's right, we'll then change these, but I think, I think this one makes sense.
Okay.
Any other comments to Mr. Garcia? Tina, thank you very much, Mr. Garcia. We're going to move on to Agenda Item Six. We'll actually move back to Agenda Item Six. It's an appeal. It's PCUP 2008-017. Its location is 1610. Actually, let me make these remarks first. The next item is an appeal from the decision of the zoning administrator or the zoning hearing officer. The matter is heard as a de novo hearing. Testimony given at the zoning administrator's hearing should be repeated, because the Commission does not review the tapes of those meetings. Decisions rendered today will be based on the evidence presented at this hearing and the evidence in the file, including appeal documents, staff reports, and letters received. Individuals speaking today should therefore present all the evidence which they may wish this Commission to consider. Now, there's a series of steps and other items concerning this. This is on a handout that is at the desk as you entered the hearing room. So with that said, now I'll introduce the matter. It's PCUP 2008-017. The location is 1610 through 1614 Colorado Street, APN 5680-030-023. It's a request to reverse the denial of a conditional use permit to allow massage services at an existing business. Staff is represented by Ms. Kizan?
Kizan, yeah.
Oh, look at me, one in a row, right. Thank you. And the staff's recommendation is to sustain the zoning administration's denial. Project overview, please.
Thank you, Chairman Ken, members of the Commission. The project with the case number PCUP 2008-017, located at 1610 East Colorado Street, is an appeal of the ZA decision denying the conditional use permit for massage services. The appellant is requesting that the Planning Commission overturn the zoning administrator's denial of conditional use permit to allow massage services without referral from a chiropractic, acupuncturist, or any other medical doctor. To go over the site characteristic, the site fronts Colorado Street. The subject property is located within an existing one-story shopping center, which includes a number of different businesses. There are currently 37 parking spaces available to all these users. It is a unique site in that it crosses the jurisdictional boundary. Approximately a third of the site is within the city of Glendale, and the remainder is located in the city of Los Angeles. To go shortly, briefly, over the history of the project. The project, in 2002 and 2005, the zoning administrator approved the conditional use permit to allow massage services use permit to allow massage services at an existing chiropractic and acupuncture business. One of the conditions of approval was that the use is therapeutic, and is referred by as onsite chiropractor, acupuncturist, or medical doctor. The latest CUP was, which was approved, is valid until January 31, 2010. On May 20, 2008, however, the applicant, or appellant, has submitted a conditional use permit application, in effect, requiring, requesting that the elimination of the condition, which is the medical-related condition of the approval. On August 26, 2008, the zoning administrator denied the CUP without medical-related condition, and on September 10, 2008, the appellant filed an appeal to the planning commission. I'm going to go over some of the factors that the ZA considered when making her decisions. The massage-only use may impact the surrounding area, which includes residential and mixed commercial uses. The elimination of medical-related massage condition changes the character and nature of the use beyond levels that a specific condition can mitigate. The change in the type of use may trigger parking and noise problem. The zoning administrator concluded that the proposed use will adversely affect and conflict with the adjacent uses, and denied the project based on the findings mentioned above. The Glendale Police Department and Neighborhood Services also recommended that. I'm also going to mention some of the appellant's statement and discussion. The appellant states that the zoning administrator's information was insufficient because she didn't consider the following: information provided in regard to current licenses before rendering her decision. The needs and desire of the community and customer were not taken into consideration. No one from the neighborhood or surrounding businesses attended the hearing and spoken opposition. The zoning code allows massage services in the C3 zone, and the request is for modification to the previously permitted conditional use permit to allow use without a medical referral. The followings are the staff analysis of the appeal. A massage service chiropractic office has been in operation at this location for the past six years, and can continue to operate until 2010 if the appellant observed all the conditions of approval, one of which is for massage services to be medical-related. The approval of the conditional use permit in 2002 and 2004, five, I'm sorry, both were subject to the referral by a chiropractor, acupuncturist, or other medical doctor. The appellant stated that the ZA did not take into consideration the lack of negative impact on the community over the past five years. The statement made by the Glendale Police Department and arrests clearly show the negative impact of the business on the neighborhood. Regarding the appellant's statement that ZA provided no justification with regards to provision of the code allowing the business in the zone, the CUP application was approved in this zone with condition, one of which appellant is requesting to eliminate, and this together with the illegal activities and citation by the police has led to denial of the application. Contrary, contrary to the appellant's statement, massage services are not permitted by right, and its approval is subject to the ZA review of the business suitability at a particular location, and her determination that the business is an asset to the community rather than a liability. A representative of the Glendale Police Department appeared at the public hearing in opposition to this renewal. The police department, in conjunction with the City of Glendale Neighborhood Services Code Reinforcement, has completed a year-long investigation into this massage establishment, which led to six arrests for conducting prostitution and performing massages without valid licenses. Neighborhood Services' representative also appeared at the public hearing and testified regarding notices to the massage establishment for failing to keep the business licenses current or properly displayed on-site, and for allowing unlicensed massage technician to perform massages at this business. The appellant has stated that the zoning administrator did not have all the evidence when deciding this case, specifically the massage licenses for her employees. All of the massage licenses submitted by the appellant were attached to the file at the time when zoning administrator was making her decision. The premises is in close proximity to residential areas, which are to the south of the site, and other mixed commercial uses. The request to eliminate the medical-related condition referenced above would create conflict with other nearby businesses and residential uses. The evidence and information submitted by the appellant is not sufficient to eliminate the concern that there could be continued illicit conduct at the business. The request to change or delete the medical-related use condition and limitation would exacerbate the situation. Their recommendation is that the planning commission sustain the zoning administrator's denial on the conditional use permit based on the rational use by the zoning administrator, and comments by the City Police Department and Neighborhood Services Section. If the commission is inclined to reverse the prior decision and approve the application, an alternative draft motion is attached to assist commission members in formulating findings. If there is any question, I'll be happy to answer.
Questions from the commission?
I have one question regarding the C3 zoning. You know, the medical-related item, which is, I guess, item number 10, is that, does that apply to all massage services in the city of Glendale?
Not necessarily. In this case, that was one of the conditions of...
Yeah, one of the conditions, but not, not always.
Not always.
Couple of questions. First, is there anyone from the police department or Neighborhood Services here? Great. We'll hear from you eventually. They're in plain clothes, that's why. I see you're here, Ms. Fuentes, great.
Yes, related to that?
Oh, please.
Yeah, to Ms. Fuentes. When you make this type of decisions, medical-related decisions on the CUP, in what cases do you render this type of decision, whether this one particular place requires medical-related or not?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, what you need to know is, the original conditional use permit application was represented to us, or to me, as a medical-related massage therapeutic center. They're the one who...
I see.
...represented that to me, and that was one of the major decision-making factors when I approved the original condition.
I have a question, just in process. They have a conditional use permit in place. That's good, for about two more years, roughly. Then, but they filed a new application for conditional use to just move one item off of the previous condition. When that happens, are they in effect, everything's, I mean, everything's opened to discussion? I mean, conceivably, could you have, when they came at you and just wanted 10 removed, could you have operated beyond the basis of that?
Well, Mr. Chair, members of the board, one of the reasons this place, or this establishment came in to reapply for a new conditional use permit is, they have been in violation and conducting the business in violation for more than a year, and they were told to come in and reapply and change it to be in line with their current operations. So, I would take it that they have been in violation of this conditional use permit, and...
You focused, again, everything we were sort of talking about is that item 10, but conceivably, for example, when they came at you with that change, could you have put in other conditions? Could you have developed other things? Or because they already have a CUP, were you only able to focus on 10?
On whatever application is in front of me, and I made a decision on that particular application.
So, and, Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
If you could weigh in on this, because I think it'll come into play a little later. So, are we strictly talking about 10, or is the entire CUP in play? And what is our flexibility in perhaps other conditions related to it?
Sorry, I missed the second part of your question. First part was, are we really, are we looking only at number 10?
Well, are we looking only at 10?
Yeah.
Meaning, can we look at other parts of the previously approved CUP? And related to that, are we just up and down on 10, or can we attach further conditions related to the CUP?
This was a, a CUP, it's essentially, you're looking at it, like I said, a new, and it's an application for a new CUP, so it's not just, you're not...
So, everything's in play?
Essentially.
You happen to just focus on 10, but we, as a commission, could focus on one through 60, or however many there are.
Right.
Thank you.
I have one more question. You know, because existing CUP has a life till 2010, and this is a new CUP application that came in that was denied. The existing CUP, which is in violation for over a year, are they then, because of the violation, in danger of losing that CUP, the license as well? So, obviously, this new application has been denied, so they don't have their CUP on this.
Right.
Now, on the old one, the existing one, which has a life till 2010, now, is that in jeopardy because, because of their violation?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I would say yes, and as a matter of fact, if this new application, you so choose to supersede the existing conditional use permit, you can also do that.
So, that'll pretty much shut this place down?
Right.
Yeah, I think I would just, I would add, I think what it sounds like to me, Ms. Lee, is that they were doing, they were, they're operating a business that was different than what the CUP had allowed.
Right.
So, the ZA could have referred, or somebody could have referred it to the ZA to ask for that, that CUP to be revoked, or, and she could have commenced a revocation proceeding, or she could have said, "Come in and get the CUP for the type of activity that you're really doing." She chose to do the latter. If this CUP is denied, the other CUP, the city still has authority to move to revoke that, too.
So, during this appeal process, then, you know, because they had the old one, and which pretty much is, you know, at revocable status. Now, with this new application, which has been denied, I think what Chairman was trying to, I think, say was that, can that be modified so that if they adhere to that item 10, you know, then, you know, can they live out till that, you know, 2010?
Is the question whether they can modify the existing CUP?
The, the new CUP that they, that was denied?
They can, yeah, they can mo, this, the commission can modify the, the CUP...
That's similar to the, the old one.
Right. I mean, this is, and you're not really modifying, because the CUP was not approved.
Uh-huh.
So, it's the council, I mean, excuse me, the commission can approve or deny the CUP, impose whatever conditions are reasonably related to the public health, safety, and welfare.
But if we're denying the current one, I'm sorry, if we're denying the one that was already denied by Ms. Fuentes, the other CUP is still in effect till 2010, and they just have to comply with, with number 10?
That's correct.
Okay. But can we add anything further to that?
The only way you could do that is to approve the CUP and put additional conditions...
You know, as we could grant with conditions...
Right.
Among those, denying 10 and then throwing out a bunch of other stuff?
Right.
Correct.
Ah, interesting. All right. Thank you. Other questions from commissioners at this time? All right. The, I guess it would be, the appellant has up to 15 minutes. I don't have cards from you. We need to have things filled in. I'll let you do it after your presentation, but that's why I was bringing it up before. I have no cards from anyone. So, if appellants or applicants, the Police and Neighborhood Services don't as a city employee, but any member of the public that wants to speak, fill it in either now, before you speak, or after, and you can do it after.
Thank you very much. Chairman, commissioners, I have a brief statement, and then I'd like to bring up some points relative to the, relative to the existing CUP, as well as the, the application, the current application, which was denied.
Would you please identify who you are?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
My name's Rick Charleston. I work for FMG. I'm the representative for the, for the business owner, who is Young Hee Choi, for the establishment at 1610 through 1614 East Colorado Street. As a matter of background, some of this may, some of this may be, have already been repeated. On January 12 of '05, a public hearing was conducted that resulted in the granting of conditional use permit to allow the continued use and operation of therapeutic massage services in affiliation with chiropractic use, and the expansion of same into an existing, into an adjacent commercial use in the C3 commercial zone. Said grant also contained conditions relative to its use. That grant for the current CUP, condition 10 stated that, that a referring chiropractor and/or acupuncturist and/or medical person could refer, could refer individuals for massage therapy. The, the issue of the new, the, the application for, to eliminate number 10 was to allow walk-in clientele, the ability to have massage therapy services in addition to chiropractic services. The existing CUP really didn't provide the person off the street the ability to have massage therapy that you might have as an athlete, that you might have where you go to a spa, to have some sort of massage therapy care. And so, that was the genesis of the reason for going and requesting the removal, or the deletion of nine. What, what the applicant proposes is, with respect to number 10, condition number 10, to affirm the zoning administrator approval to allow the reference, the required reference request permitting therapeutic massage as a referral by chiropractic and acupuncturists and other medical personnel, but to modify, but to modify number 10 to read that massage services shall be for therapeutic use only as referred by chiropractic, acupuncturists, or other medical doctors, and to provide massage services to former patients and walk-in clientele with pre-existing medical conditions. The reason we feel that that's appropriate is, it really provides additional, it, it continues to provide a valuable service to the community, that otherwise would not have that same service, with the existing condition number 10 being as restrictive as it is. The, relative to the C3 zone, the use is consistent with the various elements of the objectives of the general plan, in that massage services is allowed in C3 commercial, commercial zone. The proximity to residential areas multifamily will be in a significant benefit to same inasmuch as potential clients are within a short commute from the existing use. Moreover, some may even walk to seek therapeutic care, foot traffic, which provides an additional level of convenience and necessity to the general public, that may not have access to medical insurance, but nonetheless could benefit from this type of care. The modification to condition number 10 will continue to maintain the existing therapeutic or medical-related referrals. The use, the use and its associated structure and facilities will not be detrimental to the public health and safety, the general welfare, or the environment. An operations plan has been developed by my firm, FMG, and we will provide follow-up review of site, of personnel, and monthly, and monthly communication with Glendale Police Department to address any issues and/or concerns. Per the letter dated on October 29, 2008, which is already a part of this file, Neighborhood Services Administrator Renee Sada indicated all of, all of the violations originally brought forth had been found corrected. The use of the facility will not adversely affect or conflict with adjacent uses, or impede the normal development of surrounding, of the surrounding property. The applicant requests to modify number 10, not to change the character and nature of use beyond the levels that currently exist. Moreover, the maintenance of other conditions ensures that the... Moreover, the maintenance of other conditions ensures that the therapeutic massage business does not negatively impact or conflict with adjacent uses or the development of same. There is a, there is adequate amount of public and private facilities, such as utilities, parking, and traffic circulation measures that currently exist and provided for the existing use. The requested modification of use to allow current patients, current patients, patients no longer under a medical care provider or walk-in clientele, will not trigger parking and noise problems, and will not impact adjacent residential neighborhoods and uses. The issues that were raised relative to Glendale PD, once the, the applicant was made aware of such activity, all those individuals were terminated, promptly terminated. Additionally, existing staff, personnel, were advised of all of the ramifications relative to the CUP, as well as any, as well as any illicit activity would not be tolerated on this site. The, the applicant understands that there has been some issues. However, the applicant has moved forward relative to Neighborhood Services in terms of any violations that were occurring at the time, as well as, as well as retaining my firm, I have a law enforcement background, to ensure that we monitor her establishments, we, we set up controls for her establishment, and that she's a good neighbor. It is this, it is this reason why the applicant will request a modification of condition 10, as previously stated, and to continue said existing CUP in its form, and to prove to the City of Glendale and, and all concerned, that the applicant will move forward and be a positive business in the community, providing a very substantial service to the community. And I have for the record, that I would like to submit for the record, my findings relative to that, and I would give that to-
Is that a new document, sir?
It is basically what I just-
Okay, but it's not anything we've already received.
That's correct. It's new.
That's fine.
And at this time, if there are any questions?
Somebody was reading our mind.
It was Tim.
Yeah. Well done, because Mr. Torgerson was just saying, "Hey, do we even have a copy of the previous one?" Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I just, should be noted then, for the record, what is being handed out is a copy of the existing CUP.
Yes.
Available for the public.
As, were you on, Mike, when you said that?
Yeah.
Okay. So as noted, Mr. Garcia, we've also been handed a document by, created by the speaker that is his, basically, it's what he presented, and it's in written form, and it talks about his approach to the findings. And we only have one copy, so it's a little difficult for us to disseminate. In the course of things, could somebody from staff make at least four copies of this? I would appreciate it, so we could all look at it in a timely fashion. All right. Do we have some questions for the appellant at this time? Mr. Lee?
Sir Charleston?
Yes.
You're, you know, I guess our big concern, or at least for myself, is the, you know, the report on illicit activities. And it said it was a year-long investigation. Was this the only time that, that your client was cited for?
As far as I know, yes.
Now, you have mentioned that your corrective measure was that you've terminated these people, and then you are taking the corrective action to remedy the problem by inserting, I guess, more controlled, I guess, follow-up type of a, do you have any other more significant, measurable procedure that will assure, if, you know, we were to consider this, to, to make sure that this type of activity is, you know, is prohibited or not repeated on the site?
The applicant in retaining FMG for, on a couple of, a couple of factors. One, to assist the business in developing the appropriate documentation for its, its current clientele as well, as well as new clientele, and also to put into place documentation to, that would identify how referrals to the business is, are referred to the business from not only onsite chiropractor, as well as off-site medical personnel, chiropractors, and other medical services person. Thirdly, what FMG would like to do is to maintain an open dialogue with Glendale Police Department on a monthly basis to review any, any issues that may arise, or any questions that Glendale PD may have relative to this establishment. And then third, and then lastly, to provide any community outreach in the community that would delineate, you know, the positive nature of, of this business, and, and the value that it, that it places on the community in terms of a variety of services. You know, those types of, those types of things, along with a, a, a business owner who wants to do the right thing, and who wants to have the procedures in place to ensure that the right things are happening, and to also have the oversight over said personnel to ensure that illicit behavior is not going on, definitely not condoned in any way, shape, or form by, by the, by the applicant whatsoever. And it would be part of, of my responsibility to put a lot of those controls in place and to follow up as appropriate with, with Glendale PD and others, to, to really show this body and the community that it is a viable concern, and whatever other conditions may be imposed, the applicant is definitely willing to do that, to, to show, you know, her willingness to do the right thing.
Were you present when this case was reviewed by our zoning administrator?
No, I was not.
Sir, when were you hired by the appellant?
That would have been in September of this year.
Any other questions at this time for the appellant? Mr. Torgerson?
Yes, sir. First off, can you explain what Figueroa Media Group is and how they're qualified to be advising a medical acupuncturist chiropractic facility?
Well, FMG is a land use planning firm. We do considerable land use issues, whether it be all types of entitlements, variances, et cetera, predominantly in the City of Los Angeles. The expertise that FMG would bring relative to this issue would be my law enforcement background, and pretty much advising on that aspect, in addition to putting together those controls that I had indicated further. We, we do community outreach, we do planning, we do, of course, all the entitlement-type work, and then my expertise in, in security, security planning as well, which we would bring together to put together a comprehensive plan to ensure that proper controls were in place.
And then I have another question in your operations plan. Item number six, the subject facility shall have a maximum of blank treatment rooms that will not exceed 20, 50 square feet of floor area. That's incomplete.
Yes, it is. The information that I had- So there are six treatment rooms.
Not all dedicated to massage, some are chiropractic?
No, no. There's, there's a specific chiropractic area, I'm sorry. There's a specific chiropractic office in addition to the six massage therapy rooms.
So there are six dedicated to massage therapy?
Yes.
And maybe the city attorney can answer the question of number eight. All massage technicians will obtain a massage technician's permit as required under ordinance number blank.
Wait, what's the question?
Which ordinance is Glendale Municipal Code requires a massage technician to have a license?
There's a requirement in the code. I'm not sure of the section. I could track it down and get it for you.
Just to make this document complete, that would be a good thing to fill in.
So then, not only you were in violation with this illicit activities, but you're also in violation of unlicensed, non-qualified technicians performing services?
It's my understanding, and I wasn't, I wasn't retained at, at that time, it's my understanding that, that there were some licenses that had lapsed, and my communication with, with the client was that there could be no leeway. It wasn't, sometimes what happens, and I'm making a supposition here, that a massage therapist would indicate that they had a license, or the license was forthcoming. And being a nice person and that was forthcoming allowed that to occur, and that won't happen in the future. Now, every single massage therapist has a current license, and I believe that's already a part of the file.
Any other questions at this moment for the appellant?
I did have one, maybe it might not be, might be obvious, but I wasn't sure. Does the facility currently have licensed acupuncture and chiropractic staff onsite?
Currently, they do. Because of the economic slowdown, and that was another reason that prompted wanting to eliminate that chiropractic element in the new application, was the, the cost of, of having a chiropractor there for seven days a week, for all of the operating hours, even if there were, there was not a chiropractor use on any given day. And what I had mentioned to the applicant is if we had, if there were a chiropractor on premises, say, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, I'm just throwing these days out, three days or four days out of the seven, would that in turn be a violation of any said conditional use relative to the referral of, of, a referral to the facility? That's the, that's the dichotomy. If you have someone who just has a shoulder ache that wants a massage, they don't need a referral from a consult, from a chiropractor. You go in, you have a massage. If you ran, and you have a charlie horse or something, you don't need a referral from a chiropractor in order to have massage therapy, or a deep tissue massage, or whatever. And I think that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to be able to operate a facility that has both chiropractic care, acupuncture care, acupressure, and a variety of massage therapy care. But on any given day, you may not have all of those functionality.
So for right now, if one client walks in to your client's facility, is, that person has to automatically be examined by the chiropractor before you can render any type of services?
Right now, the way the conditional use reads is all clientele for massage therapy would have to be referred by a chiropractor, acupuncturist, or other medical person in order to have that massage therapy care.
So that's what I'm asking. So is that what's happening at your client's facility now? Is that one person walks in for therapy massage, that person has to see the chiropractor first before you can render services?
That is what happens, and unfortunately, one of the violations was when the chiropractor was not there, and/or when a chiropractor was there, but the individual said, "Well, all I want is a, you know, you know, a massage. I don't need to see a chiropractor. I just came in for a massage." And, but then, the way the current conditional use permit is written, they would have to see the chiropractor first.
I believe the current CUP says that massage services shall be for the therapeutic use only. That's pretty clear. As referred by chiropractor, acupuncture, medical doctor. Doesn't say it has to be referred five minutes before the massage. If somebody visits a chiropractor, and the chiropractor says, "I think you need massage therapy for six months," he should write a prescription that says massage therapy for six months. That person should then, according to this current CUP, be able to come in and get massage therapy for six months without seeing any chiropractor, acupuncturist, or other medical doctor, as long as they have that prescription. So if the interpretation of this number 10 was that somebody, that you had to have a chiropractor onsite 24 by 7, I think that's a mistaken interpretation of the current CUP.
Understood. Additionally, what comes up is, now you have an individual who walks in, he's not referred from a chiropractor, but he would like a massage therapy. So this business would have to turn that person away.
Or see the chiropractor.
Or, or see the chiropractor, or turn them away.
Right. According to the current CUP, the, the CUP that's in place currently.
And, you know, I guess my question, I guess, I guess my response to that is, it's, it does create undue burden for the community and/or that clientele that would like to have a massage, but they do not have the referral. And, and so that takes away from the convenience of a local massage therapy acupuncture clinic. That takes away a lot of the convenience to the community, because they can only have massage services if they've gone to see a doctor and are referred.
There's just a correction. Under code requires, it says a conditional use permit is required to allow the provision of massage services. I don't know if that's misspelled or not.
It should be massage, I think. I had to confide it something.
Okay.
Are you running message services?
I don't think that was my document.
No, no, that was, that was the city's argument. Mr. Shears, please.
I need to clear up, maybe it's just my feeble mind, the request at question right now is the request to eliminate item 10, which is the requirement that you have a referral from an acupuncture chiropractor or other medical person. But it seems to me that what we're trying, what we're talking about in our discussion right now is, do you want to make the business, change the business to the type that possibly won't even have chiropractors or acupuncture puncturists on staff, but will be open just for walk-in traffic? I guess, I guess what I'm trying to say is, it sounds like it's more than just eliminating item 10, it's more to change the business, business view, or the business activity?
The intent, the intent is to modify number 10 to read, the massage service, services shall be for therapeutic, therapeutic use only as referred by a chiropractor, acupuncturist, or other medical doctors, and to provide massage services to former patients and walk-in clientele with pre-existing medical conditions. So what it does is, it doesn't eliminate the referral- referral by a medical person, but it does allow for walk-in clientele who aren't being referred to have massage therapy at that establishment.
So you're trying to expand, expand the business activity?
I guess it expands the use.
And, and Mr. Sheets is hitting on something we'll be considering with the rest of the testimony, is, is just what the implication is as far as that ten, whether it's allowing a morphine or an expansion or intensity of use, exactly.
Mm-hmm. And how, oh, I finished, sorry, yeah, sorry. How exactly would you propose to determine the validity of the existence of a pre-existing medical condition?
You know, that would come directly from, you know, the, the customer, the client.
Self-diagnosis.
And, and...
Shin splints.
And, and if that verbiage needs to, to be modified, then of course, we're, we're more than happy to, to modify that verbiage. Just to indicate that, that the primary use is referral business for chiropractic, it could be chiropractic and/or other massage therapy techniques. That is the core business. But to have the ability for walk-in clientele without that referral to be able to have massage therapy and/or chiropractic services performed.
But the referral could be from an outside chiropractor, acupuncture, or other medical professional, wouldn't have to be, doesn't, under the current condition, does not have to be your chiropractor?
That's correct.
Just to touch on what Chairman King said earlier, if, let's say this body was to consider your old conditions, that is with a ten intact, the condition, the ten as it is from your original application, is that something that you could also go along with? Or are you fixed on this elimination of ten or modification of ten?
Well, Mr. Lee, if, if, if we don't agree, they have to live with it. So, I mean, that's really the only conversation, if you will. It does get confusing.
Okay. Well, the condition ten in the, in the current CUP, really, we're, we're back to the same thing. It just says referred by chiropractor or medical person. Doesn't have to be on site, just referred by. And that does eliminate some of the convenience and use for the, the community. And, yeah, we are, we are asking for a modification of that condition. Not elimination, not deleting, but a modification.
All right. Just to clarify now process, we're going to hear from a representative of neighborhood services, the police, other interested speakers, if anyone actually is out there, and then you'll have some time for rebuttal. There may be some other questions and so on. Before you step away and we hear from neighborhood services followed by the police department, is the owner of the property also the operator of the business?
No, you're, you're the operator. You don't own.
So you don't own the property, you're just the operator. Okay. Is there a reason other than perhaps language skills that the owner doesn't wish to speak, I'm sorry, the operator doesn't wish to speak?
Uh, that I can't, I can't answer. I was hired by the, the proprietor, the operator.
Okay. I would be interested when, when you're sitting down, I would be interested if the operator would care to address us during rebuttal. Okay?
I, I know that, well, I'll, I'll discuss that with her. I know that in terms of language barrier, she may feel uncomfortable.
If that's the case, you can just mention that. I can understand that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Could we hear from neighborhood services, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name's Renee Sada. I'm the Neighborhood Services Inspector that was assigned to this case, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. If you want to give me a rundown of Neighborhood Services involvement, I could do that also.
Well, there were issues.
Sure.
And I see in the app, the appellant's information in October, so less than a month or so ago, your office probably, well, I think it was signed by you, as a matter of fact, yes, said that they're free and clear right now that you don't have any issues.
As of my last inspection on October ninth, two thousand and eight, they were in compliance with all the previously noted violations.
And then just very quickly, for the record, the violations were, and approximately when were they discovered?
My initial inspection was conducted on March seventh, two thousand and eight, and I noted six violations, beginning with violations of the conditional use permit, which included no onsite chiropractor or a medical practitioner, lack of required massage establishment permit, persons performing massages without required massage technician permits, and a facility being used for other purposes in massage or chiropractic service. Then number two would be operating massage establishment without the required massage establishment permit, persons performing massages without the required massage technician permit, and then portable signs placed in front of the property, water damage to ceiling tiles in the side facility, and the security doors which weren't swinging in the direction of egress.
Okay. Now, that was noted in March.
Right, March seventh.
What was there, when they were notified of it, were they responsive? I mean, I see in October, you've, or in October, you've cleared them.
Correct. They were responsive. We did receive communications, I believe, from one of their attorneys after the initial inspection. I did another site inspection on April twenty-second, two thousand and eight, and at that time, they did have an onsite medical practitioner, which would basically remedy the massage technician and the massage establishment permit violations. And then the other interior, you know, building maintenance issues were resolved. At that point, though, I did not close the case, and I continued to monitor it with periodic inspections every couple of months or so.
So they responded promptly, and then you just kept it open to make sure that they were maintaining?
Yes, sir.
Themselves. Okay.
So April twenty-second, all items that was found, the citations, that was corrected?
On that date, they were found to be corrected, yes.
Any other questions for Neighborhood Services? All right. Thank you very much. The police department, please. I see Chief Adams has changed the uniform.
Yes, sir. This is the uniform of the night. This is just my Wednesday uniform. Lieutenant Bruce-
It's Hawaiian day at the police.
Yeah, it was. I'm sorry. Hopefully, the, it won't clash too bad on people's color TVs, high definition and all.
Never wear stripes.
That's right. My name's Lieutenant Bruce Fox. I'm with the Special Investigations Bureau of the Glendale Police Department. I have two things I'd like to talk about. First, I think I can clear up one issue. I, I kind of find myself in two worlds. Sometimes I'm in the planning world and in the city clerk's world of permits. So I think I understand the issue that is, is kind of bogged us down a little bit. I'm gonna take a stab at it, maybe staff can kick me if I'm wrong. But the reason why it's contentious about having a chiropractor or other acupuncturist or medical doctor on site has become such an issue is because under the permit process, which is handled by the city clerk's office, which I'm also involved in, if you're not gonna have a medical practitioner on site, you have to get a massage premises permit. And there's no guarantee that this location would, could, could get a massage premises permit through the city clerk's office. So to adhere to the non-compliance to that, they had to have a medical practitioner on site. So I believe that's why this chiropractor has, had been required to be there in addition to the stipulation in, in number ten that's been mentioned several times. So that's my understanding of why that had, had been happening. If the chiropractor leaves, as we found on, in, in March of oh eight, we, we go to a location, there's no chiropractor there, then they're in violation of, of the massage premises permit rules and laws, and they have to either have the, the permit or the, or the medical practitioner on site. So I think that's what the, the catch is there.
Okay. Let's talk now about the timing of, you know, one full step behind beyond unlicensed massage. Let's talk about the nine individuals and the instances and the timing of the prostitution.
The first, uh...
Or should I say alleged? Have they been convicted?
No, they, well, I'll explain that.
Some alleged and some not. All right.
In March, they'd all been adjudicated. The first instance was in March two thousand and one, where there was one arrest for prostitution.
Oh, two thousand and one?
Yes.
Oh, so many years ago.
Many years ago. March two thousand and one, one arrest for prostitution and one arrest for performing a massage without a permit. At that time, also, I'd like to note out that the current applicant was present at the location and was, was listed as a witness in that police report. May of two thousand and six, the city clerk's office received information from a confidential informant that informed us that extensive prostitution activities were going on inside this location, and that had been going on for some time, and there were pressure applied to employees to provide those services. We commenced investigation, and in July and September of two thousand and seven, we made three more arrests for prostitution inside the location. In September two thousand and seven, we located an advertisement, an adult-oriented newspaper that advertised this location. Glendale Massage was the title of the ad, and it said, "Shiatsu Japanese, Deep Tissue, Hot Oil Massage, Hot Steam Tower, Body Scrub, and Table Shower," and offered a thirty-five dollar discount with it if you bring the ad in with you. And all of the locations in this are similarly enticed with, that ad didn't have one, but many of the ads had young, attractive Asian girls pictured in them. We went back in coordination with Neighborhood Services and conducted sting operation where we sent undercover officers in to get massages and, and, and see what else was going on. And at that time, there was no prostitution. That's March two thousand and eight. But there were three instances of performing massages where the technicians did not have permits, and there was no chiropractor on scene. There was a side office to the side where there, it looked like there could be a chiropractor, but there were no medical records present. There was no, no one was asked their information as per code. You're, you're supposed to ask, fill out a card saying your name, your address, the information, your ailment. Those kinds of information were not asked of the clients who were at this time undercover police officers. So citations were issued at that time for three individuals for performing massages without technician permits. And to the front desk girl, she received a citation for having a premise that didn't have a massage premise permit. And that's, that's kind of catching you up to date from what we've done here at the police department. Neighborhood Services, we've been in constant communication with them. They've been monitoring that the chiropractor has been on site. One other note that I'd like to present to the commission, too, is that the applicant has met with us several times, and we made it clear that she really had two choices in, in life. Conduct a medical office at this location and keep things status quo with a medical practitioner on site. And there was discussion about moving away from chiropractic into acupuncture. I believe the chiropractor stayed on site, and that, that transition didn't happen. Or eliminating that medical use from the CUP, as they've tried here, and then applying for, they're still, even if that happens, they're still gonna have to obtain a massage premise permit without any guarantees that that would be accomplished. So we've been in constant communication with, with her on that, and that's what kind of led us here today.
As the, I'm sorry, questions for the police representative?
So during your sting operation, you did not find any prostitution activity?
Not, not in two thousand and eight. We did in two thousand and one, two thousand and seven.
You've uncovered quite a bit lately in Glendale, according to the news press of late.
Yes, sir. You turn over rocks and you find things. Yes, sir. We were, yes, sir.
Yeah. Have you had any conversation with the appellant's, I'll call him a security representative, but, I'm sorry, what was the name of the company?
FMG.
FMG. Have you had any conversation with FMG over the last, well, since his date of hire?
No, sir. Was that September of this year?
I believe he said so.
Yeah, no, sir.
He may have been talking with someone else at the city. I'd be interested in knowing during rebuttal if you have actually been in contact with the police. You indicated during your initial part that that was gonna be part of your process, so I'll let you do that on rebuttal. Any other questions right now? All right. Did you have some? All right. Thank you for bringing us up to speed and providing the detail.
Thank you.
All right. I have no other speaker cards. Ms. Fuentez, would you like to pipe in?
Yes. Mr. Chair, members of the board, just for point of clarification, I just wanna go back to the original application for conditional use permit and the public hearing where the applicant was represented by her lawyer. And because what I'm hearing here is almost a modified application for this conditional use permit. The hearing was, and the intent of the application was to delete item number ten. Not to modify, but to completely delete the medical aspect of the establishment. As a matter of fact, if you go through the application for conditional use permit signed by the law offices of Mark Wecker, they specified in there the deletion of condition number ten. Even in the findings, specifically finding number two, it mentioned in there that the proposed project or application is for the elimination of the requirement for a medical doctor or medical-related services for this premise. And the reason I'm bringing this up is that's how I heard the case, and that's how I got into the final determination of a denial. It was a change of the use and the, for me, walk-in means intensification of services that they have. So I just want to let you know, that's where I was coming from. Thank you.
I did have one...
Please.
Point of clarity. Earlier, we asked a question if the writer was the owner of the building, and I didn't, is she the owner?
She's leasing.
Okay. Thank you.
Just for the record, this statement was that she's leasing the space.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other ques, or, I'm, I have no other cards, so I'm gonna enter in rebuttal time for the appellate. Oh, you have a card? I'm sorry, you need to turn it in. I, I don't know that you have a card until it's turned in. Okay. I guess I need to make that more clear in the future. Not only fill it in, but then turn it in to the clerk. Okay. All right. Would you please step up and identify yourself? I, I'm sorry. I don't have a chance.
My name's Sonia Butikano.
Thank you.
I manage the property in Glendale, and I love Glendale. Glendale is my life. I don't want anyone to destroy Glendale. But you want me to...
Well, if there's anything else you want to add, you have several minutes.
The massage. If doc, someone seeks and went to a doctor or chiropractor, and they said, "Okay, you need it," yes, massage is come in. But if someone just walk on the street and say, "Oh, okay, I want to have sex. I want to do it, go to massage," it's not right. That is a low, low level. Number two, I manage in the building, have young girls, young children, young kids, boys and girls, even old like me. It's not safe if people come to want to massage, free to walk in, and, "Yeah, I have money. I pay you. You do it." I guarantee it's sex come after that. Yes, I came from the place that I know, the thing like this. I never be a prostitute, but that is the potential of that one going to come into Glendale. For example, in, from KF, the new being announced a couple of months ago, chiropractor in, in sino, turn to be prostitute, serve and do the service. What is it? And last month, CNN, Connecticut, massage the clinic, have the prostitutes conduct, do the prostitute service. That's what I have to say. And this is not safe, even old like me and walk, and that type of people around me. You think it's safe? When they have no money to go to the young prostitutes, even the eighty years old, they might grab and do something. Thank you.
A question for the speaker, please. Come back for just a moment. We have a question for you.
When you say you're manager, are you the manager of that facility?
Of the building.
Of the building that she's...
Apartment building.
Apartment building. Oh, so it's not, you're not the manager for that operation?
No.
That she's, oh, okay.
Of course.
I understand, I understand. I just said manager, okay.
No, now, now you may sit down. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I have one more card where I'll allow the gentleman to introduce himself.
My name's Bill Butikano. Even though my language is not, this is not my first language, but at least I can view, this is a... This is not my first language, but at least I can view, this is a good democratic way to voice something that if something we disagree totally with this kind of operation, at least I have a courage to step up and like to say something about, in addition to my wife's say. We came from the area that prostitution, it is illicit business. In the background, they would not tell you they do prostitute business or illicit business. They just did it quietly, and a lot of people, they're afraid. They're afraid about retaliation. And in walking up here, we were thinking so many times, 10 times, many times, that we should we step up and just voice to the commissioners and in front of the appelleant? So we figure out this is the American way, and the only way you would know is at least not only us, just two, not only two of us, there must be a lot of people. There are many apartment buildings just next to it, in the same block, next block, a lot of young people, young girl, young children. Now, this is the kind of thing, your job is to protect them. I'm not living over there, but I'm concerned about, me and my wife, we're concerned about our tenants, the children of our tenants, and also the traffic is getting so heavy. And in turning around, sometime it may have police report about a car accident and so on. So this is something, it is affect our, let's say, affect our business, our legitimate business in the area and the safety of the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
A question.
What country did you come from?
Where they have the, a lot of massage.
Well, I was a combat medic over there.
Yes.
But I wondered which area.
Thailand.
Where?
Thailand.
Yeah, that's very bad.
That's why even I just want my, let's take my chance to speak out about, we saw a lot of Thai massage pop up many way. I feel so bad, so ashamed, I want to hide behind the counter somewhere. This is only a certain small group of bad people, they thinking about make money at the expense of some others. This is not right. Any other questions, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. All right. I see no one else waving cards, so I'm going to close the public portion. Make sure I've got everything there that I wanted to do.
Rebuttal.
I'm sorry, yeah, I slipped past the rebuttal. Thank you very much.
I have it now.
And when, if you could just hand that to the clerk for the record.
Well, we, the applicant and myself, we've listened to the community opinions and issues and concerns, also that of Glendale Police Department, as well as the Neighborhood Services. I think that we have, in good faith and promptly, addressed those issues relative to the Neighborhood Services. I think that relative to Glendale PD, yes, you know, the activity that was determined to have happened there is illicit and by no, by no means sanctioned by the applicant. And the applicant will do everything possible with, on her end, as well as my assistance, to screen and provide as much safety, security for the community. We also have to look at the convenience for the community as well. I think part of the reason why there is generally a five-year grant or 10-year grant relative to conditional use is so that the business can show that they can be a good neighbor. And yes, a couple of issues have transpired. The applicant started this business, or basically leased that location in 2005, and no negative activity in 2005, 2006. There was some, according to PD, activity in '07, no violations in '08, but there was a citation relative to permitting. I think that the applicant really does want to do whatever she can do and put in place whatever controls necessary in order to have a going concern that's a positive piece of the community. And we understand any concerns that the community would have and PD might have. And she's just asking to show that she can be a good neighbor through the rest of this conditional use period, January 31 of 10. And once she proves that, and when she has to apply subsequent to that, there will be a track record there, subsequent to this hearing, where she would have demonstrated her ability to do this. And so I urge you to, I urge you to make whatever conditions relative to the modification of 10, of condition 10, for the applicant, and then the applicant will do whatever she needs to do to ensure that she complies.
Mr. Lee?
Just for clarification, did you say the applicant was in operation from May 2005?
Well...
So the police finding was in March 2001, there was arrest. So she was not...
Right, but she was not, she was not the owner of, I mean, not the owner, but she was not the business owner.
But she is responsible for the July 2007 arrest, though.
Well, yes, she would be responsible subsequent to the 2005 conditional use permit.
Is there some reason she's not here?
Oh, she's...
Oh, okay.
And I'm presuming that because of concern over the language barrier, that's why she would prefer not to speak?
Yes, and again, she's leasing that space, and she's, you know, just, I mean, language barrier.
Fine. Any other questions for the appellate's representative? All right, sir, unless there's something else you'd like to add, I'm about to close the hearing.
Thank you.
All right. We'll now close the public hearing and enter into deliberations among the commission. Is there anyone that would like to leap forward? Mr. Torgerson?
I'd like to leap into a question of the city attorney. Originally, I thought we're considering condition number 10, which says, "Massage services shall be for therapeutic use only," as referred to by, and it specifies, "Three types of folks: chiropractor, acupuncturist, or other medical doctor." Then we had the representative from the Police Department come up here and assert that some city law or some provision somewhere requires that medical person to be on site at all times during which any massage treatment is being given. Can you elaborate on that position, please?
Absolutely, Commissioner Torgerson. And again, I think what Lieutenant Fox was referring to is that if the establishment is not... There are two types of permits that were under our code. One is the, and this is for massage permits, one is a massage establishment permit, and one is a massage technician permit. If you, if you have a massage establishment permit, then there's no need for a requirement that the technicians who provide massage services, or there's no requirement that the establishment have a licensed, that it be in conjunction with a licensed or chiropractor or acupuncturist or medical doctor, because this establishment...
Okay, so if it's got a massage license, they don't need any medical personnel whatsoever?
Right, right.
Now, if they are a medical facility and they have a condition that says they can have massage services if they're recommended by a medical person, a chiropractor, doctor, or acupuncturist, where, in what law does it say that that medical doctor, acupuncturist, or chiropractor has to be on site during hours of operation while they're giving massages?
I don't think that's what he said. I think it just said that if...
Because he said there was a citation, because they went in and they found people giving massages, and there wasn't a chiropractor there in the office. And I'm just wondering where it is required to have a chiropractor present during the massage operation?
I think that was because that was part of the original application.
The original application, CUP, said that, and I'm not trying to be a C lawyer, but the literal words are that the massages are for therapeutic use as recommended by a doctor. It doesn't say that the doctor has to be standing there or in the same building or in the same block. It just says somehow they've got to show that this massage is being done under the recommendation, recommendation of a doctor.
Yeah, and I'd have to take a second to look at the code, but Chapter 5.64 requires, again, that the, if the physician or, excuse me, chiropractor person is not on site, then that, that facility needs to be licensed or permitted as a massage establishment.
All right, so...
Okay, so that's the answer.
The code does require...
Yes, all right. That was my only question.
Okay. Would you like to share your thoughts on the appellant's request?
Well, while I appreciate the efforts of FMG to come up with an operation plan and the appellant's efforts to work with the Police Department and so forth, that's all very good steps. I appreciate their desire to eliminate illicit activities. That's all very good steps. However, it's, in order to make the findings for a conditional use permit, you have to make four findings, that it's going to be consistent with the elements and objectives of the general plan, that's a fairly subjective assessment, that its use and its associated structures and facilities will not be detrimental to public health or safety, the general welfare or the environment, and that it won't adversely conflict with adjacent uses, and that there's adequate facilities and parking and landscaping and so forth. While I could make finding number one, finding number four, I could not see making the other two findings because of the increased intensity of use that walk-in traffic would bring. And the whole objective originally of having a medical facility available for treating medical problems, and one of the treatments could be considered like physical therapy or massage or whatever under the care of a doctor, that's an entirely different use than was originally intended by the original CUP. And this represents a fairly major change in use going to a walk-in massage situation. So I would not be able to make findings number two or number three, and so I would therefore vote to sustain the zoning administrator's denial.
All right, thank you. We'd like to go next.
So my question is that if we sustain the ZA's decision, now do they still have till 2010?
They have...
Or CUPs?
Yes.
So they...
They have roughly 14 months.
About 14 months, because they are in compliance now that they can operate under old CUP?
Okay. So who else can we hear from? I'm going to call on someone. All right, Mr. Sheets, you seem prepared. The good news is we'll go in the opposite order.
Next time. Yeah, I appreciate all the valuable input from everybody and all the details that were given to us. I think the report was very thorough. The presentation was done very well. Thank you. To me, it's pretty simple as far as what we're here to do. I got confused by how things were presented and how they were stated, but I think we're here to decide whether to support the ZA's denial of the CUP. And make a decision one way or the other on that. And based on what I've heard, saw in the reports to us and what I've heard tonight, I didn't, I haven't heard enough to make me think that I should reverse the ZA's findings. I've heard of a lot of information that's caused questions in my mind. I think there are issues here around this process and what is happening and what the intent of the business is, but that's not why we're here. It would seem that with what has occurred and how it's, how the things have occurred and what, over what period of time they were, they occurred, there was complete justification to deny the change in the CUP. And what, something that really troubled me and probably swayed me to go that way was, after getting input from the Police Department, Neighborhood Services in the Police Department, but specifically the illicit acts that took place over the period of time that they did, which seemed to occur pretty early on in the process. And then, as was presented by the customer, the applicant's representative, the owner was not aware of the illicit activities, and since then, people have been terminated. But I don't understand that. I mean, if it's, it just doesn't wash with me, that those kind of acts, if it was somebody that didn't take out the trash or didn't close the door, some issues like that I can understand and we can look at that. But to have acts that are so, so blatant, and then to not know that they're happening causes great concern to me. So based on that, I would have to say that I'm in support of the denial.
To sustain?
Sustain, yes.
All right, very good. Mr. Lee?
Well, initially, I was kind of, I guess, misled in the beginning, thinking that this was a brand-new case, that we're to review the whole case, and, you know, if we need to modify the condition and so on. So that's why I was so studios of as to what the facts were and what the cases were, and then questioning and making all those questions. But if we're talking about the appeal process and what was given to Ms. Fuentez to make a decision on, and what we're hearing today is different, you know, then really, you know, we're not comparing oranges and apples here. So, you know, even though I do feel that, you know, some of us are, have some challenging, you know, physical conditions that require massages, therapeutic massages, here, you know, just solely based on the subject of the ZA's decision on this case at the time, you know, I am for the sustaining.
All right, thank you. Mr. Berman?
I feel about the way he does about it. There's so many cases, I mean, if the Police Department doesn't want it, I don't want it. I hate to put it that short, but it was my responsibility.
All right, thank you, Mr. Berman. For my part, there's two things in play. The one is that I think initially it was very clear the conditional use permit was for massage incidental to chiropractic and other therapy, incidental. And what we're seeing here is, and over the past has probably been a little bit of morphing, we've seen that with other issues in the city, but that they're trying to get away from massage incidental to probably becoming primary. And I'm not comfortable with that. I don't want to eliminate one simple condition and allow that to happen at this time. I'm also very uncomfortable with the track record that the appellant has shown over the last several years. Now, I think she's, they have taken positive steps. They've hired someone to help monitor the process. I think... I think my attitude on that is you had trouble in 2006, you had trouble in 2007. You haven't been caught yet. Hopefully, it's because you're not doing anything wrong in 2008. But the police can't be everywhere. If they don't catch every speeder, they don't catch every instance of criminal activity. So while I'm prepared to say that maybe you've turned a new leaf, you've got positive things in place, I would frankly suggest that over the next fourteen months, while you still have the conditional use permit that you have, that you make use of the gentleman that you hired, that he gets active with the police department, and that you demonstrate over the next fourteen months that you've turned a new page in terms of how you're going to operate your business. Because one of my thoughts, uh, as I was looking at it, is why give you a CUP at all when there is criminal activity going on inside your business? So from my perspective, in fourteen months or so, on January 31st of '10, your current CUP is up and you are going to need to demonstrate that you have become a responsible businessperson and that you're operating within the law. And then, once you've demonstrated that, maybe there are some things that can occur to, to give you a chance to improve maybe some economic aspects of your business. But with what we've seen and the testimony we've heard and what's in place there, I'm with my colleagues, there is no way that we're going to reverse the zoning administrator's decision to keep ten in place. And I wish you great luck over the next fourteen months in terms of demonstrating that you do have a responsible and successful business. With that said, could I have a motion if there's no further comments?
Do we have a motion?
You could just, you know, I don't know that we have a motion, but that's an easy one. Oh, yeah, it's on the back.
You could just move to sustain this zoning administrator's finding.
Right.
I think that motion would-
By the way, that's very nice of staff now, the two sides. You're saving a lot of trees. Who would like to make that motion?
I move to sustain CUPs.
Let him get it out.
Okay, I move to sustain, um, you know, I cannot read.
Oh.
I'm sorry. I put on my glasses.
Mr. Sheets will step up to the plate.
This is the right one. I move that upon review of the consideration materials and exhibits, current, of the current record relative to the conditional use permit, case number PCUP 2008-017 located at 1610 through 1614 East Colorado Street. And after having conducted an appeal hearing on said matter that the Planning Commission hereby sustains the zoning administrator's decision and denies the conditional use permit, case number PCUP 2008-017, in accord with the findings set forth in the decision letter of August 28th, I mean, August 26th, 6th, 2008.
Now's the time, Mr. Berman.
Now you can second.
Now you can second.
Oh, I second.
Very good. We have a motion. Could you call, roll, please?
Commissioner Sheets.
Aye.
Commissioner Torgerson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Berman.
Aye.
And Chair King.
Aye. On a vote of five to zero, the zoning administrator's decision was sustained for PCUP 2008-017. Anyone disagreeing with this has fifteen days to file a further notice of appeal with a filing fee at the Building and Safety Section/Permit Services Center located on this floor. Again, an appeal must be filed within fifteen days. We're going to take a very brief two-to-three minute recess and return for our new business. We're in recess. This procedure, this, these findings, this is what you live by for the future?
Is this, oh, this one here?
Yes, yeah. Whenever we're facing CUPs-
Actually, Chairman King?
That's the process.
We are back on.
Oh, thank you very much. We are back in session. It is a continuation of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission of November 19th. We're moving on to Agenda Item 8A. It's new business. It's PSR 2008-003. It's a special recreation development review for 2224 Fern Lane. It's at 2224 Fern Lane, APN 5654-0169-902. Since I know you like to do it, I'm going to let staff read the description and present the overview.
Thank you. Chairman Kane, Planning Commissioner. Again, the case before you is a project involving an unmanned wireless telecommunications facility. It's four antennas within a radon that is thirty feet. If you look directly behind you, you'll notice that the subject site is a parcel that has an area of 1.37 acres. And the existing characteristics entail a vacant lot, essentially. There are three existing monopoles in the area, one for AT&amp;T, one for Sprint, and one for T-Mobile. There was an unmanned wireless telecommunications facility approved by you, the Planning Commission, back on August 6th, 2008 of this year, for a fourth telecommunications facility. This was done by Royal Street Communications. So this would essentially be the fifth telecommunications facility in this project site area. The entire lot and the surrounding area is zoned SR, which is special recreation. That is the reason why an unmanned wireless telecommunications is going before you today because based on the zoning code, all projects must go to the Planning Commission for review and approval. So rather than go to the design review board, it comes to you for your ultimate review as a special recreation zone permit. And again, this would be a proposed equipment enclosure that's eight feet high. It would be made of decorative block wall as required by code. The equipment enclosure actually falls halfway within the project site area and half within what is a paper street, essentially. It's a public right-of-way that is unimproved. As such, there will be an encroachment permit required by the Public Works Department in order to continue the construction of the proposed project. Now, that would be actually a, in, uh, a condition of approval for this particular project to obtain an encroachment permit. If the applicant so wishes and this has been discussed, to actually move the equipment enclosure solely within the city-owned lot and outside of the public right-of-way, no encroachment permit would be necessary. Now, again, code requires that the construction materials be an earth-toned palette, and that would be to assist in blending into the hillside. As such, there is proposed slump stone, and it would be an earth-tone palette, also with fencing above, which would essentially also be painted the same color to be compatible with and complimentary, complementary to the slump stone. If you like, I'm going to go up to the actual set of plans. You'll notice here is the entire site plan showing the full 1.37 acre parcel. This essentially would be the equipment enclosure that is proposed at fifteen feet by twenty-five feet, again, for a total lease area from the city of 375 square feet. Now, directly adjoining this particular parcel is Fern Lane or Paso Glen Drive. Paso Glen Drive, Fern Lane will be improved. There are proposed soccer fields to be constructed right up above, and you'll notice best, and that would be shown in the aerial photograph right here. You'll notice the two freeway, north and south, Fern Lane. Here is the dirt road if you drove up to the project site, leading to the multiple existing monopole towers. And the project area up above here to the north would essentially be the future proposed soccer fields. As such, the Parks Department had a requirement that all utilities and electrical panels and whatnot be proposed and constructed fifteen feet away from any curb face property line in case there would be a future expansion of the Fern Lane. The monopole here, as you see right, and it's best actually shown in this particular diagram right here. This would be the equipment enclosure that built into the hillside. It would then be connected underground, Paso Glen Drive, Fern Lane, and the monopole would be here amongst the other four entitled, three of which have been already constructed, antenna antennas. That concludes staff's presentation. The, the plans that were submitted by the applicant state that the design of the antennas are to be reviewed by the Parks Department. Actually, it is under the purview of the Planning Department, or in this case, the Planning Commission, to ultimately review the design. So the Parks Department has submitted a proposed light standard. Again, this would, this antenna involves a light standard-type design in order to blend in and be compatible with the existing three other antennas that are used as light standards. So again, this is under your discretion at this point. We've attached proposed conditions of approval. There are eleven of them. Tonight, you were handed a revised motion, which actually addressed, since we have received the Public Works comments, or I should say, the Parks Department's comments after the report went out, we just wanted to make note that there had been a clarification in the revised motion. This would be pertaining to number three, that a, an encroachment permit would be required if they proceed with the current location of the enclosure. And we also wanted to specify in detail an item number six, that the proposed enclosure be a decorative masonry block with colors to blend in with the natural hillside as specified in the colorboard and elevate, colorboard materials sample that was submitted by the applicant. And that would just be a little bit greater in detail than a typical, you know, it's to match the hillside and et cetera, et cetera. So again, that concludes staff's presentation. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for staff at this time? Two quick ones. Is La Paz slump, is that an actual color? Or is that the style of-
That would be the style of the slump stone that's being proposed.
Just making sure because of what you said here, alright. And do you know what the overall heights of the other cell poles are?
They range anywhere from twenty-five to thirty feet.
So this is higher by another five feet than any of the other ones?
This is proposed at thirty feet, so it'd be consistent with some of the existing-
Top of Radome is thirty-four, according to the-
Excuse me, let me, oh, the, no, the Radome sample that was just handed out is a sample from the Parks Department of what would be typical-
It's not their specific.
It's not, it's not what is being proposed in terms of this applicant-
I thought this was something revised.
No, it simply indicates the type of light standard that the Parks Department would like to see.
Fair, because I had seen the thirty and I thought, very-
Yes, no, 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 no.
So this was just for the light standard?
This is only from the Parks Department to show what type of light standard they'd like to have included on the antenna.
Go ahead, please.
This is not really, I guess, you know, this project's specific, but overall, I've seen this, you know, cell poles with like imitation tree looking things.
Those are concrete cell poles, yeah.
Right, so, but this one I see as just a pole going up. Does Glendale have any, you know, suggestions or, you know, has, you know, type of guidance as to when you apply the tree-looking type of a cell?
Correct. Now, there is no specific standards when a monopine or a monopole, you know, or a monopalm would be proposed. Again, it's, it's up to the applicant. In this case, and I don't want to speak for the applicant. He has a few moments, obviously, to add. However, there was a discussion by the applicant that there was a specific intention to be compatible with the existing cell sites. So as opposed to introducing a monopine or a monopole, a monopalm in this, you know, in a, in a street-type setting with existing power poles that are specific light standards, the applicant felt that this, this particular proposal would be more compatible than a faux-tree antenna.
Right, and plain as the design review board, it would probably interrupt the industrial feel that they're trying to develop there by the park. Sarcasm heavily encountered.
It could be.
Alright, anything else for staff at this moment? Seeing none, are you going to say anything? We would like you to fill in a card and turn that in.
It has been turned in.
Really?
It could be Mr. Robert McCormick.
There it is. I did miss it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Cal. My name is Robert McCormick, and I am the applicant. I just had a couple of questions about the conditions that were recommended by staff. One is moving our facility to the north out of the right-of-way. Would that be considered substantial so that we have to come back before the Planning Commission for review? And then, also, moving our, one of the conditions states that our power pedestal needs to be moved inside of the equipment, equipment enclosure as it currently sits in the right-of-way. If we were to move that back over into the city lot but outside of the equipment enclosure, would that be an acceptable modification of the recommended conditions?
Well, let's take the first one first, your first inquiry first.
You know, I apologize, I'm sorry.
That's alright.
I was being asked my question.
Mr. Chair?
You know-
I guess just before we go to the answer to those questions, I just want to make sure that the applicant is complete with his presentation. Do you have any more comments?
Yes, no more comments.
Oh, I was going to let him continue.
Okay.
Yeah, it was free form. But thank you, Mr. Garcia. I wouldn't abbreviate his-
Okay, and I'm-
Did you see, did you hear the first question?
Yes, the question, this is in regards to the power pedestal that is-
Oh, no, that was the second, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Oh, the first question being the relocation of the equipment outside of the public right-of-way and fully on the city-owned lot. That would not substantiate a need to come back before the Planning Commission.
And I, and I thought you were trying to address it with the, with the conditions anyway, to give them that flexibility. Maybe I didn't read that in.
We needed to address the actual proposal as it's before the Planning Commission today. And in this case, because the equipment enclosure is half in the public right-of-way and half on the city-owned lot, we would need to have that, an encroachment permit be essentially pulled. If the applicant so chooses to move it and relocate it fully on the city-owned lot, the Planning Department would be very amiable, and so would the Parks Department, I'm sure.
Okay, let me ask that. On the first question, obviously, you've made that statement. Had that been broached before and now it's just in public comment?
No, actually, there had been quite a number of emails and telephone conversations and back-and-forth recorded easements. And it appears that the matter apparently was resolved, but it was not resolved, I guess, appropriately, or-
Well, where I'm getting from is, and I'm fine with the fact-
Correct.
You guys have been talking before this, and now you're bringing it up for the record, is, has the balance of staff, you know, you've said it's not going to be considered a major change, and they won't have to come back through the process. Is that, that's more than just your opinion. You've had a chance to talk within your department about it?
This matter has not been broached, but I'm looking at Laura Stotler and Tim Foy, who, I mean, again, if you move this particular, I mean, obviously, the approval-
What I, what I don't want to see is someone further up the food chain going. That's wrong.
Correct. Now, and again, this is a conditional use permit for an unmanned wireless telecommunications facility. It, it's a special recreation, not a conditional use permit, but a special recreation zone. So your approval would ultimately be for the unmanned wireless telecommunications facility. As it is currently proposed, a portion of the equipment enclosure is in the public right-of-way. That's necessitating an encroachment permit by Public Works. If the applicant so chooses to relocate it and put it completely on the city-owned lot, essentially, your approval would still be valid. However, the plans that have been approved would be slightly modified, but I would assume that this modification would not be inconsistent with your approval.
And also, Parks is aware of this.
Parks is aware of this, too.
And it would be prior to them pulling a building permit?
Yes, it would, obviously, it would be well before because the plans as proposed would have to be revised.
Alright, let's move on to the appellant's second inquiry.
This would be-
Sorry, applicant, not appellant.
This would be the power pedestal. The power pedestal as shown is currently within the public right-of-way. And again, that would be under the encroachment permit if it was pulled. If the applicant so chooses to then relocate it on the city-owned lot, the caveat would be that it'd be maintained at least a minimum of fifteen feet away from the curb face, simply to allow for future expansion of Paso Glen Drive.
And, and again, you don't see that being a major change that would-
No, we do not. But we would prefer, and this is the Planning Department, and when we've discussed this in-house, is that we'd prefer to have all pedestals, all type of equipment, within the enclosure. If it cannot be within the enclosure, for some reason unbeknownst to the Planning Department, we would then have it, as a requirement by the Parks Department, be at least a minimum of fifteen feet away from the curb face.
Okay. I just have- I just have, and I want to carry on with what Mr. Garcia pointed out. Mr. McCormick, any other comments, anything else you want?
No, sir.
Okay. I just want, I just want to double-check.
Yes.
The issues with the telecommunications facilities on Cumberland, or adjacent to Cumberland, I believe that's not this appellant's firm, this is a rival company? Or is it this company?
No, I think it's a different company.
I think that was, well, I'll name names, I don't care. T-Mobile, is that right?
I believe so.
And this is Verizon?
Yes.
Okay. Because I was prepared to use a little leverage.
Will this improve my service?
Yes, it will. Quite a bit.
Well, now, you're going to have to, now, you're going to have to put that on your form for the year. Okay. Anything else for the applicant at this time? Okay.
Thank you.
Any closing remarks from staff?
None. But, as conditioned, staff recommends approval by the Planning Commission of the special recreation zone permit.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing portion of it. I'm going to enter into Commissioner deliberation. I'm going to start with you, Mr. Sheets, because I understand you had prepared a few slides in part of your deliberation process.
And I did visit the site, and I had a couple items that came to mind, and I don't want, I don't want these items to change the speed at which we deal with tonight's permit. But, I think some of the things that I noticed will bring some thoughts and question around what we, what the design should be. And then, beyond that, what I'm looking at, and we may decide to do something tonight or in the future, but I think, my feeling is that when I talk about this, there will be some desire to go forward and maybe talk about standards being set and reasons that we should do that.
Okay. And again, since this isn't agendized necessarily, we'll look at your, your photos, we'll reflect on what that may mean to this specific case.
To this, correct, correct.
And then, when later, when we're in Commissioner comments, if we want to perhaps have staff carry further, do some study sessions, whatever, we'll bring it up.
That's perfect. That's exactly what I like.
Please proceed.
I'll start out, please don't question the quality or the professionalism of these slides. In fact, you'll find one, I didn't delete, is going to be a picture of the street. But, this is the northerlymost pole, which I think is Sprint. Now, that, my question here, or my concern here, is that's a light standard that you see there. It's not the handle to a water pump, or some other device, but can you take it back to that?
Excuse me, it's on automatic.
Ah, I don't know how I did that. So, put on pause.
Oh, we'll see you in a second.
Okay, that's fine.
So, that's probably the best-looking one that I saw there. And that's, that's a closer look of the same thing, so we can move on to the next one.
So, it's got no lighthouse?
This is AT&amp;T. It's approximately in the middle of the array of standards. If you look at the equipment that's on top of that, if I remember when that was approved, when I was on the planning, I mean, the Parks Commission, it didn't look like that. It looked more like what we will see as presented by the applicant tonight. And I think we, we need to know going in, is it going to look like this, or is it going to look like what we see in the picture? And that's, that's my thought here, and we can talk about it more later. I do not remember when this was put in, that we had the microwave dish, the square piece there. And you'll see later that there's something on one of the equipment areas off to the side that looks like a microwave. But, we can move on to another one. We can move past that one. That's just another view of the same thing. It's not, it's not hidden, it's not inconspicuous, and the main concern here beyond that is, that's paint chipping. It's not, it's not a palomino, or a, you know, special effect there. That's paint chipping off, and we need to know who's responsible for maintaining that. Another view, oh, another view of the same, same pole. So, we'll go to the next one. Yeah, I think I got focused on the painting there. Move on to the next one. That is the light standard that is next to that pole. That's why I showed them both in the same picture. Not only does that condition exist on here, it exists on one of the other monopoles. Very unsafe condition. That's electrical wiring exposed right there. We can move on to the next one.
I'm going to stop right now. And, Mr. Garcia, I'm going to suggest to you, in your role as a night safeguard in our city, that you might touch base with Parks and tell somebody to get their butt down there tomorrow and take a look at that.
Well, we'll have somebody look at it.
Thank you.
On this pole, you'll find a similar electrical issue, but there's too much sun in that picture. The lower part of the apparatus at the top, right above the, yeah, that is a doorway that is, has been open for months and months and months, and I see it when I pass on the freeway. That is a condition that should not exist. It can't be, it can't be as safe, and it can't be good for the maintenance of the, of the site, which makes me say that part of this whole thing is, who maintains that? And what standard do we have in place that causes them to maintain it? So, we can move on to the next one. Now, there it is. It's the same, I got too much sun in that, but that doorway is open, and another, another plate is dangling down, and all the rain and wind and dirt and everything can go inside that pole, which is not a good condition. And, okay, go ahead. That's, that's one of the first ones, and at the base of that, that's just, that's just to show that what they can look like. It's very neat, it's very clean, and it did have a light standard. Now, that's at the bottom of that pole, the pole, monopole that had the plates open at the top. That's wide open, the plate is gone, I think, I don't even know if it was laying on the ground beside it. Somebody has to monitor and maintain those. There should be something stipulated when we allow these poles to be put in place. You can go on, please. Now, related to the item I mentioned on the one pole that had the microwave dish, which I think was the square plate, I didn't, I never remember, and I, and I, I'm going by my memory, but I don't remember any time that we approved poles, that we were allowed to put an apparatus on the fenced area where the equipment is enclosed and, and hidden. So, I, we need clarification on that. I would, I would suggest that as we go forward in set standards, we look for that kind of thing. I don't ever remember seeing that on the plans. But, I'm not questioning them as much as I'm saying we should look at that and be aware of what we're putting in and what we're approving. So, that was my point there. That's not on the pole, but there is, that's transmission occurring from that fenced-in area. Same thing. Okay. So, I, to sum it up, if you look at all of these, one right after the other, they're all different. The one that we're showing now, doesn't, it has a light standard there without the light on the end of it. Some of them are with plates open. Another one is not painted, and the painting hasn't been maintained. As I go forward, and we have people like you coming forward and asking for these items, I'm not opposed to light standards, and I'm not opposed to us playing a role in allowing these, these pieces of equipment being put in. But, I think as good citizens and responsible planning commissioners, we need to do something to stop the bleeding here and make sure it doesn't get out of hand, that we don't have fifty different poles in the future, because it looks like an area that's very inviting and may continue to expand. So, I think we need to do something about that, but that's all I, I don't want to make it go too long here.
Oh, you know, this, I mean, these pictures, you know, say, you know, I mean, it's worth a thousand words here. Thank you very much. Can we, I mean, is it too late for us to impose or make a requirement for this new installation to, to require, you know, the, what is it, what was the word again? The mono-tree, whatever.
Oh, the...
No, 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 the fake tree.
Oh, you mean in terms of...
Oh, oh, the, the...
A monopine, or a monopalm?
Well, well, we could impose that as a condition. I would be a little resistant to it, only because what they're trying to do is they walk along that. They've already got three in that are doing like the light standard thing.
My next question is, you know, because of the procondition that's in right now, I mean, it's a sore eyesight. Can we impose these conditions on the other people, so that we make this, this uniform improved?
Peeling and flaking pain is not permitted on any type of structure, so we will then go ahead and notify Neighborhood Services and work, actually, perhaps with the applicants for these three other existing antennas, to see what they can do to go ahead and repair that peeling and flaking pain, and the panels.
But unless, but unless they come back to us, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Garcia, we can't now say, oh, they all need to look like palm trees.
Correct. That is correct. No.
Yeah, right. With respect to maintenance of the other ones, I'm not sure if the other three are on city-leased land, is this...
All three of them are.
So, there's, there is probably discretion under those leases, obviously, that requirements for maintenance. So, to extend any of these are, need updating, that'll occur per the leases.
And, but even if they're on private property, they're not allowed to have peeling.
No, they'll, they'll do it. They'll be willing to do it. We just need to make them do it.
The other question is...
And I just want to, I'm sorry, before Commissioner Lees, because I also want to make sure that we keep the focus on this application to extend what we're...
Oh, indeed.
The other question is that, as the picture showed, every pole was inconsistent as far as, you know, the look. This is the drawing, I guess, standards that you pass out, you know, and I see some of those things with really the, the items that's turning out, and the square items and, you know, things on there, I guess, microwave, I guess, you know, equipment. Is that something that you can, do they have this, you know, drawing for their guidance?
For their guidance? Now, again, some of those satellite dishes, or antennas, or whatnot, might have been added after the Planning Commission's approval, without even the Building Department's or the Planning Department's knowledge.
Right, so they're...
Which is one of my points. That's not allowed by the application, any changes, they have to come back to us.
Right.
I think so.
So, when they do, then we can maybe impose the tree?
Well, you know, that, you know what? That might be in play. We'll see. I'm going to reopen the public hearing with permission, because I want some interplay and some follow-up questions with you, Mr. McCormick. First off, we're noticing dissimilar holes. Are those proprietary in terms of what those poles look like, or are they off, off the shelf somewhere?
No, not at all. There are various vendors that provide different...
Can't. So, can we make a condition that your pole, lacking some technical reason not, barring it, that your pole be of the same manufacturer, same style as, let's say, the nearest adjacent pole?
Well, I would, I would say that our proposed design probably mitigates any, provides any, the least visual impact in any of those poles that are there. And I would say that a lot of it has to do with the installation of equipment after they receive their permit, and then also that our design shows our antennas totally encapsulated in a radome, so you won't see our antennas at all.
But, the pylon itself, again, what we're, what we're combating here is appearances. You're hearing some sentiment for monopines, or monopoms, or whatever. I'm thinking at least at the very, at the most basic, is each of the pylons, for the first twenty-some feet, should look identical. And what I'm asking is, do you think you can supply a pylon that, up until we start getting involved with your equipment, is going to look, that can be identical to the nearest other pylon?
That's the closest one to yours, as I, as I saw the plans.
Well, it would be up to staff to condition our facility to install our antennas on the exterior of the pole, as opposed to being encapsulated inside of a radome. That, that's always...
Well, yeah, but the radome's up at the top.
Correct.
Right? I'm talking about the first, I said twenty feet, but maybe it's eighteen, whatever. That, that, for that first area, until you get up, let's say, to the light standard, that you're using the pylon like the one next door.
Well, I, I believe most of the, most of them are either an aggregate surface or a steel pole, so whatever staff would require us to, a type of pole that staff and Park would require us to install would be sufficient.
Well, tip in hand, I would be prepared to make that a condition, that it be, to the greatest extent possible, identical in terms of the pylon shape and material to the adjacent pole. Absent technical, technical reasons to the contrary, to be proven to staff.
From the antennas down, what you're referring to?
Yes, exactly right. I understand everything above it.
Yeah, I understand.
Now, maintenance, you're, you're hearing what we're saying there. The other question I had is, we saw the pictures where one of, someone else added some stuff to the structure. We're looking at an enclosure right now where there's nothing mounted to the exterior of that structure. You understand that nothing can be mounted to the exterior of the structure without coming back for permitting and so on?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. All right. Does anyone else have any further questions for the...
I'll just say, I apologize to you. This is my input based on the package, so I wasn't trying to delay you or hold you up. I know you've done the preparation correctly, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, unless there's other questions, I'll reclose the public hearing, and we'll go back into deliberations or comment. Do any, well, you kind of weighed in, I guess, Mr. Sheets.
Yeah, and I, I think the only thing I would add is, I think it's a very well-planned application, and it follows the rules. And I would add, I think we could add, in this situation, the items, and I think you might have been concurring to the, as far as the maintenance, the same look, and not being able to add things. I think that not being able to add was part of the original plans, as I remember. They should have to come back to us whenever they add anything to those poles. And if it's not a stipulation, I think it should be. And that's, that's what I would request.
I think there is, in the motion itself, there is an item about maintained.
Actually, actually, an item in terms of conditions of approval would be condition approval number two, which is a standard condition for all antennas. Halfway through the paragraph, it says, "Any modification to these plans must be approved by the Planning Department staff prior to the changes."
Right. And what you were pointing out was that they need to be maintained, which is the one.
Correct. And the first one says, "Subjects must be developed and maintained."
Right. So, I have no other...
So, the only real thing that we'd be talking about was the pylon compatibility statement?
I think is a good add, yes.
Mr. Berman, what are your thoughts?
Well, the only thing, on the pole itself, I'd like it to be the one shape going up, not zigzagged, that type of thing.
Right.
I like simplicity.
Would you support the suggested amendment in terms of the pylon compatibility?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else to add, Mr. Berman?
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Lee?
I, I guess, I stated that my wish is to really, to have the monopine here, but we're not talking about that here right now, so, yeah, I'm fine with this.
All right. But, if that's the case, I've kind of already stated my opinion, if that's the case, would I, someone like to prepare a motion? Well, and I guess that's going to turn to you, Mr. Sheets.
I think so.
Because we've already gone on record with the eyesight issue, so...
How convenient. Okay. I would like to move that upon consideration of the Special Recreation Development Review Plan 2008-003, and having reviewed and considered all materials and exhibits submitted with regard to said proposal to construct a new unmanned wireless telecommunications facility on the city-owned lot, addressed as 2224 Fern Lane, just north of the intersection of Fern Lane and Fern Motorway, and located within the special recreation zone, subject to compliance with Title 30 of Glendale Municipal Code, and following eleven additional conditions listed below. And the Planning Commission hereby makes each and all of the following findings of the fact.
And then, you should, probably just, just say, as identified by A and B...
Stated in A and B, and do we want to add in those? I think they're all in there. We've agreed that they're already in the condition.
You should, the motion should probably stay in accordance with items A, B, and the eleven conditions with the added, you know, if you could verbalize that.
Okay. So, the following findings, in fact, with, including items A, B, the eleven conditions that are stated in the motion, and, and the additional items, if they're not mentioned in here, of, of maintenance, the same look of the pole, or the monopole being the same at the base, and, and any additional items added to the monopole in the future would have to be approved by the Planning Commission.
But, before I seek a second, it just occurred to me, there was something else I was going to bring up. And I wondered about the ability to, to require or allow provisions that, should the city And I wondered about the ability to, to require or allow provisions that, should the city ever decide to do some of those banners, you know, like we see on light poles, like, you know, where they're acknowledging the troops or special events, that maybe we could throw in a condition that the applicant agrees to allow their monopole to, to, to provide for, to provide provisions for the use of future banner installations?
Do we want to do that on this motion, or should, maybe that's something we could add on the standards item if we should go forward?
In the future, you mean?
Future.
All right. I'm fine with that. We don't have it on the other three, unfortunately, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So, let's, let's plant that in our brain for the future, because I could see how banners would look kind of nice in the development. All right.
So, I move it as-
So, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
With support. Could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Sheets.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Berman.
Aye.
And Chair Kane.
Aye, and a vote of four to zero. The, the PSR 2008-003 Special Recreation Development Review has been approved for the telecommunications facility. There's a negative back.
Yes. I apologize.
Back on that, there was an motion. We'll need a, we should have done it in the opposite way, but-
Actually, yes, and the, there was an initial study conducted for this particular project, and a negative declaration was prepared, and this would be for PEIF 2008-013. It is a negative declaration, there are no mitigating conditions that were attached to this. So, I apologize for not, for not mentioning it before you took the vote on the special recreation permit.
So, we really need to have a motion that acknowledges the negative mitigation, no, negative-
It's actually proving the neg deck, because this is-
It's approving the neg deck.
Okay. All right. Which we, we'll have to-
Yes, the motion, the motion, I apologize, and the motion, Mr., or Chairperson Kane has the motion.
For the negative deck?
For the negative deck. There's one, it has a little, it was right underneath the revised motion that was based on your-
If you have it, I think someone can just move the motion.
Just move it, adding it?
Yeah. If you don't mind just moving it, then, is there a motion to-
It'll be a separate motion.
Is there a motion to adopt the negative declaration?
Right, just make a-
I move that we adopt, adopt the mitigated negative declaration for this project.
2008-003.
2008.
Right. I have-
013.
I have a motion by, by Planning Commissioner Sheets. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Lee, or a little call, Commissioner Sheets?
Aye.
Could her take over?
I apologize, I'm in designer review board.
I understand.
Commissioner Sheets?
I gave you the opportunity to do the description of the project.
I so appreciate it.
All right, please.
Commissioner Sheets?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Burnham?
Aye.
And Chairperson Kane.
Aye.
The motion passes, four to zero. Thank you.